Say what's going on? Let me, let me load up real quick. And then we'll, we'll start this thing. Alright. Say what's going on? I wanna welcome you to a special edition of the Warzone. I wouldn't call it a late night edition, but you know, it's a little late. Um. We in here. I'm in here. What's going on with you, man? Hold on a second. Alright, I wanna go over some things from today. And start there. Let's, let's start with, uh, I guess he Congressman Clay Higgins post screenshot. Look at that, big homie. That shit don't scare nobody, man. You know, I know you're trying to get a rise out of me with your comments. And all that. And I know you, you the big shot politician, Ronnie. And you the you the dude I guess everybody supposed to be scared of. So I'mma say this real slow for you, Clay. Congressman or not. Fuck you. Your comments were out of line. And those that you represent must have the same ideologies. But Congressman, you don't scare anybody. I'm just letting you know that before I get started. You don't, you don't scare anybody with your tough boy talk. Um. I think it was a great day. Um. Some things, uh, had to be done. They were done. Um. Mayor President Josh Gilry finally acknowledged Trey. His family that lost a Trey. So I, uh, I appreciate that. I think it's a little late, but I I appreciate that. Um, it needed to be done. There's no questions about that. It needed to be done. Um. You still need to come down to your black community and communicate with those guys. Um. And when you do that, then you, you're actually making some progress. I think the elephant in the room is addressing the fact that, uh, the white Cajun militia showed up. I was actually sitting in city council and I'm bad at turning around, so I, I didn't turn around for a while. Um, and when I looked, I saw that everybody was gone and my, okay, let me go outside. So I, I go outside. I see these ten guys and you know, they, they got their guns and man, how you want me to put this? I'm most scared of a bad bitch with good pussy than some pussies with some guns. I'm being honest with you. You don't, that shit didn't, look, I'm shaking right now. I'm shaking. You know, I listened to the news and what they said. I, I listened to the news and what they said, how they're not gonna let this happen and they're not gonna let that happen. Young man. You don't control the narrative anymore. This is not nineteen fifty-nine. You don't scare these young people. You don't scare these young people. You can come out with your ten people and all that, all you want. First of all, you motherfuckers ain't trying to go to no jail. Let's get that straight, man. You ain't gonna kill none. You ain't gonna let none die. Yeah, you probably been out in the woods shooting your coons and your rabbits and all that. Uh. But you, you ain't ready, man, for what you trying to perpetuate. And I'mma be honest with you. I think y'all, you, you trying to get a rise out of me. Let me tell you why you won't get a rise out of me. Because my mind is focused on what needs to happen. And you come out because this protest needs to be peaceful. Well, ever since I showed up, there's not been an unpeaceful protest. So your presence was not needed. You don't intimidate people the way that you think. Um, you may intimidate some, but you don't intimidate this man at all. Now, I tell you what, because I done heard your little threats and what y'all been saying. You know, I mean, it is what it is, playboy. You know, we gonna do what we need to do to get justice for this kid, this young man. And that's what it's gonna be. If that makes your panties tight, then we don't give a fuck. At all. At all. So I'mma tell you what, what else is gonna make you mad. When I finish teaching them, they're gonna take their money out of your fucking economy. See, you don't, you don't need these black people, remember? But you need their money for your economy. I'mma teach them how to spend their money with their own people. So don't, don't come, oh, you're trying to separate us. I can't separate something that was never together. Let's get that straight, man. And I'm being straight up, man. You know what, Timothy Castile? Get the fuck off my page, dude. That wasn't. Let me help you, homie. So, the thing is, you know, your, your show of resistance, you have the right to peacefully protest with your guns. How would my father put this? Don't start no shit, won't be no shit. We gonna be peaceful. Because that's what we gonna be. But we ain't got another cheek to turn. You stay out our lane, we stay out yours. It's that simple, baby. But we come to get justice. And you, your little ten cronies ain't gonna stop that at all. What, you didn't like the way we talked to your man or nothing? You know, we had to have a real conversation. And I'm proud of those people for standing up. Because they have rights too. The Cajun militia is not the only people entitled to the rights of the Bill of Rights, of the Constitution in the state of Louisiana. Everybody is. So if you don't like it, brother, then so be it. You, you were so on your game. How the fuck you eat with the enemy? Man, don't come, look, let me tell you what I don't do. See, I didn't engage you 'cause I don't, I don't, I don't eat with the enemy. I'mma give you fifty feet. I'mma give you fifty feet, man. I mean, you know, let me, let me, let me break this down to y'all, man. This is not nineteen fifty-nine, man. See, in fifty-nine, you had us shook. You had us terrified. You know, you, you slapping and beating us and we just got our head down and we scared to say anything. That shit don't work no more, bro. Now, what you could do if you really want peace, you could stand up for what's right. So if you showed up, do you want justice for Trey? No, you don't. You never mentioned it. You never mentioned it. You don't have a problem with what they did to that brother. So here's the, here's the deal. Let's make a, let's make a deal. Let's make a deal. Cause it's simple. We can make a deal. I keep the youngsters and Krista keep the youngsters quiet. They won't tear up and burn your shit down. As long as you don't start killing us. You don't kill us, we keep our hands on them. So why don't we make that agreement? See, you want something and we want something. Hold on. You want something and we want something. You don't kill us and the youngsters won't get loose. Ronnie, I got this, baby. I'm just making sure we got a clear understanding on how this shit go. I'm making sure that we got a clear understanding on how this shit go. You, you don't get to have it both ways. You don't get to kill us and think, cause you show up with guns, that we gonna be quiet. Fuck you! That's it! Man, do, do you, 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 you don't, you know, if somebody would've burnt the American flag, fuck you and your flag. Let's get that straight. And, and you know why I say fuck you and your flag? Man, you know how many black people done died under your American flag? Behind your bullshit, your ancestors bullshit? You know how many black people have died under your American flag? All lives matter. Man, fuck all that. Let me tell you something, man. Do you know how many people have been wrongfully killed? Black people under your American flag? Do you know how many people lost their lives just trying to learn how to read that were black? That wanted to vote and they were murdered? And you want me to honor your flag? Fuck your flag! And that's real, man? Yo, your American flag? I'mma just tell you the real. You don't want no smoke. We gonna be peaceful. Cause that's, we, you know, we don't have to be unpeaceful at all to beat you at your own fucking game. We just need to take our money out your fucking economy. You feel what I'm saying? We just need to take our money out your fucking economy. And let's see how well you function then. See if the Latino brothers would wake up and, and, and they could understand. Shit. You can't survive without us. You the fucked over us for four hundred and sixty-three years, man. Don't you think that's long enough? You motherfuckers still wanna be in the same mind frame, man? And you know what's the sad part? Some of y'all wake up in the morning with these dumbass ideologies. And you really think that black people just gonna let y'all whoop them and murder them? No, bro. My ancestors went through hell for me to be able to eat where I wanna eat. To drive what I wanna drive, to stay where I wanna stay, to pee where I wanna pee. And guess what? We ain't our ancestors. We are not our ancestors. Do you understand me? Young man, I know y'all sick and y'all watch these videos and all that shit there. Inbox me, Elijah. Inbox me. And Five Star ain't nothing but talk. Yeah, I am. I talk like a G, but I walk like one too. Y'all ain't that bad, man. Me by myself. Ain't none of you bitches tried to fuck with me. See, cause you can smell a real motherfucker from a mile away. I know you can. I'm not looking for no trouble. I'm looking for justice. But in the process of looking for justice, I want you to understand. You ain't gonna do a motherfucking thing to me. Period. It ain't gonna happen. You go read all of novels you wanna read, look at the old movies and you could go look at anything. Man, I'm not worried about you. I'm shaking like booty meat right now, cause you the, man, please. You don't run this country. You don't run this country. And if you cool with it, why don't you carve out a section of this country and give us the land that we was promised? Y'all would not know where to be. Give us our forty acres and a mule. Carve out a section of this country and give us our land. Won't you, won't you do that? Won't you do that? If you can do that, then it is what it is. See, everything you, you know, you, you standing out there with your little guns and I wanna talk to you. I wanna, I wanna see if I can make you understand. Everything you ever got in this country, you stole it. You stole it, you oppressed people. And that's what you did to not just us, the Indians and the Mexicans. And you feel like we have to bow down? They don't have to log off. Let me tell you something. They can't log off. Five Star got your motherfucking attention, anime. I'm right here, anime. Don't, don't log off, you racist piece of shit. You know why? Cause I penetrated your way of thinking. You ain't never met something like me. You ain't never met a motherfucker that wake up in the morning and don't give a fuck if he died the same day. Because I'm a man. I'll die on my back before I ever live on my knees. That's the thing I'mma teach my people. I'll die on my back before I live on my knees. And I ain't finna walk around scared of nail, motherfucker breathing. Now, what we want is justice. Let's see. You know what, man? Why y'all, why y'all entertaining these folk? I'm, I'm, I'm letting the comments just pass me by. You know why? Because you ain't even on my level of thinking. You ain't on my level of thinking. You, you're not, you're not mentally where you need to be. You ain't on my level of thinking. You know? Let me, let me give it to you straight, homie. I ride black on black three hundred. Say five star G on the plate. I am not a member of the NFAC, cause some of y'all tried to do that. I am a member of some very powerful organizations. And trust me, I've been in touch with them. And that's the type of shit you don't want no problems with. And I don't wanna give you no smoke, man. Cause I know you ain't built for it. You see what I'm saying? So my thing is, if this was a peaceful protest where they were cooking and y'all even got something to eat, what was the show of force for? Who you was scaring? I came there by myself. I parked directly in the front. Matter of fact, left, went across the street, got me a slurpee. Put a little gas in my car, cause I like to sit in the car and run now. And I came back and I went in and I spoke and I hung out in the parking lot as long as I chose to. Ain't never met a defiant black man like that, have you? Cause normally when you show up, people get to running and scattering. Well, I'mma tell you something. I've lived in Lafayette, but I'm from Third Ward, Texas. And we don't run from nobody. We don't run from nobody. But I tell you what, I'm, I'm, I'm for right now, the mayor did what he needed to do. Thank you for doing that. But it ain't enough. If family need to see, if you don't wanna release the body cam footage to the public, the family needs to see the body cam footage in private. Any other law enforcement agency in the country would do that. They need to see it in private. Another thing, we're gonna monitor your state police. You ain't gonna get the doctor to tape up. See, cause how the hell you let the police investigate the police and be comfortable with that shit? You know what I'm saying? You don't, you don't, uh, and, and y'all do me a favor. Stop applauding me. You have the same ability that I have to stand up to any form of oppression that you need to stand up against. What I am is a father. I'm a grandfather. I'm a college student. I'm an activist. I'm an advocate. But you have the same ability that I have. I have so much respect for all those good people that were out there. And it was a rainbow coalition out there, I think. But you know what's crazy? The young whites don't have a problem getting along with the black folk. It's your middle-aged suckers. And you old Klan members that can't seem to let go of the burning cross. That's your problem. See, you want us to move on and forget about our history? We can't. We can't forget about it. You know, because you, you send us reminders. We can't forget about our history because you send us reminders. And lady not, not feeling you? Lady B not feeling you? You damn right. It's in their DNA. Their ignorance is hereditary. Now, I know that's a big word for some of y'all that come out of raccoon country. You know, living in the shack by the swamp. That is hereditary. It's in your DNA. Stupidity is in your DNA. Your inbred ignorance is in your DNA. Oh, that boy uses a big word, huh? Yeah. It's in your DNA. It's in your DNA. Five Star is here as long as he choose. And I'm, I, 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 I got mad love for y'all, man. Y'all, y'all have shown me so much love and, and I really appreciate it. And, uh, I mean, all the good people, black, white, whatever, man. Just nothing but love, man. And, uh, can't thank you enough. Uh. You know, you know, I, I mean Dana Owens, let me put Dana's comment up. You about to have him crying with the name called. Dana, let me tell you something. I'm, I've been like, for the last, the days I've been here, I've been a sandwich short of a heart attack. They came with the fat jokes. All that. And you know what I tell them? I'm America's worst nightmare. You know what I would tell them people that got something to say about me? I'm America's worst nightmare. I'm a rich nigga. And I ain't gotta work for y'all. I ain't gotta punch your clock. I ain't gotta kiss your ass. I ain't gotta do none of that. And you can't stand that. First of all, let's get something straight. I just got off the phone with him. I just got off the phone with him. And you don't have to own a house to be a G. Gilery ain't gonna do a mo- Cedric, let me, let me read your comment. It's too big to put on the page. Let's see if we, yeah, it's too big to put on the page. So I'm gonna read your comment. Cedric John Patton. And don't be offended with the answer that I give you. Man, where's the Lafayette OGs that you taking all the clout from? Taking what clout? I shook their hands in the parking lot. People wanna see motherfuckers who own homes in McCombs, Truman, VZ, and black role models from the flats. I respect your message, but Gilery gonna stone face you all. Gonna stone face you all day. It's obvious what they said on. They won't negotiate with you. You need to stop taking clout from local black men and my brothers. You need to stop letting this dude steal clout while making it worse for Trayford and Lafayette, where the North Side men. Why don't you tell that to his father? His father don't feel like I'm taking clout. Why don't you tell that to the dudes that called me down here? They don't feel like I'm taking clout. See, I don't need the clout, young man. I can go anywhere in the country and, and do what I do. I shy away from news cameras, homie. See, you don't know what an OG is. See, OG doesn't, a real OG doesn't promote violence. They supposed to pull the coattails of the youngsters and try to help them line it up so they can figure out how to deal with it. It's called conflict resolution. But you don't have a clue what that means. As far as Gilery, Gilery ain't gonna do a motherfucking thing to me. Matter of fact, keep his conversations short with me unless it's pertinent to something because I don't play games. Now, as far as somebody getting clout, see, that's the problem with this whole situation right now. This about motherfuckers grandstanding. This about motherfuckers trying to see who can say, I did this and I did that. I don't give a fuck about that, homeboy. And I, do you understand where I come from? I got more power than motherfucking upper-level politicians. I don't need the clout, baby. You need it. And people like you need it. Nah, I don't need it, man. Role models. Role models. Hold on, let me check you out again, man. Is that really you? So can you being the white man that wanna check an OG, can you be a positive role model for the black community? When the last time have you stood up in city council and fought for them community centers that were closed? How many times have you stood in a school board meeting and fought for the education of a black child? How many times have you fought the police department because they wrongfully killed somebody? Say, man, I need you to talk to me, bro. Don't get quiet now, man. Don't get quiet right now, bro. Don't get quiet. Come on, come on. I'll holler at your boy. How many times have you fought How many times have you fought to make sure that low-income housing was what our people got if they couldn't afford to be somewhere else? How many times have you fought the ordinance where this man is saying that you can't feed the homeless? Black role model? Motherfucker, I'm in college because of a group full of kids that I mentor challenged me. And when I decided to go back, I'm on the fucking dean's list. Do you know what that means? I have to have at least a 3.5 GPA. And my GPA is 3.75. And I do all of this between fighting for communities and everything I just asked you if you do. I do all of that. I have a personal life. And I still go to school. Sucker. So if anybody can be a positive role model, I bet you I could because I can teach a kid how not to fuck with the forty, forty, forty plan. Know what that is? Nah, you don't know what that is. That means if the children listen to me, you'll never work forty hours a week for forty years to get forty percent of what you made. You'll own your own goddamn company. You'll write your own goddamn checks. You go to work when you get ready. So the next time you think about it, matter of fact, when you decide to marry your old lady who lived with you in the trailer, maybe you can be like a big boy and get married at sunset on a motherfucking island in Hawaii. How much your last wedding cost? What's wrong? Cat got your tongue now? My last wedding cost seventy-five thousand. To talk to your boy, man? What's wrong? Cat got your tongue? Say, man, you not fucking with no weak dude, brother. I am probably at least one of them, a decent example for an African-American child that comes from a poor neighborhood. You know why I can relate with them so much? Because when I was growing up, my mom only could afford three pairs of sweatpants. Three pairs. That's, that was it. I, that's all I had for school, brother. My pops only made a thousand dollars a month. That was it. And until this date, until this date... Hold on. I wear my sweatpants religiously. But you know what? I live a hell of a life. I live a hell of a life. See, that's the problem with you people. And I'mma say you people. You racist people. You think because you own a fucking trailer home and an old Chevy pickup truck that you better than everybody else? Motherfucker, you couldn't live my life on your motherfucking ten best days. At all. I'm self-made. I don't have to be out here fighting for people. I don't have to be out fighting for people. But I give a damn about my people, homie. See, all of us can't be bought off. The ones y'all have bought off, I'm not them dudes. I'm not them dudes. I can't be bought off. I see a lot of people on here. I'm getting to know all of y'all. I appreciate y'all tuning in. But I got my homegirl on here, Tia. I think I saw Tia. Yeah, Tia Queen Diva. Better tell them how to five-star rock me. So I'mma tell you what, and then I'mma get off of that and let you, uh, do what you do. I told you, if you looking for my ride black-on-black, five-star G on my plate. But when you wake up one morning, maybe you could be like me. I'm on car number sixty-five. You sure you wanna add this discussion with your broke ass? Say, when people with money are talking, please shut your broke ass up. Do that. Don't, don't, don't do that. So... So it, it doesn't, here's my thing. I've, 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 I, um... I just want people to know that you have the ability to speak the same way that I speak. Um, I put it up. Hold on, let me, let me put it up again for you. Dollar sign. Hold on. And now I'mma pin it. And a lot of people keep asking me. A lot of people keep asking me to put it up, so I put it up. Y'all talking about everything else. You talking about me, you talking about the militia, you talking about the NFAC. But you motherfuckers that's making these comments ain't talking about justice for a man that was wrongfully killed. Because you really don't want him to have justice. You really don't want him to have justice. And all we really want is justice. All we really want is to be treated equal. See, first of all, when you stole us and brought us over here, we didn't ask to come to this motherfucker. And really, you stole some of my Latino brothers over there from Mexico. And a bunch of them was black. So a whole bunch of us had to run off to Cuba to get away from you crazy motherfucker. They your workers, you know, forever. You got free labor out of us, beat the shit out of us, killed us, raped us, all that. And it looked like every time we made some progress, you found a new way to enslave us. You found a new way. You found out how to separate our families. You used slavery. You used the welfare system in the fifties and the sixties because the man couldn't stay in the house. You, you, you got your penitentiary system where you, you sent all the brothers off to jail on bogus bullshit. Now you using the CPS system to separate the black family. See, we don't, we don't need to be a part of nothing but something that could repair the black family. You motherfuckers have traumatized us for four hundred years. And you think we gonna put up with it for another four hundred? No. You know what, man? Let me, let me read this, this, this bullshit. I'm here, I'll be at the meeting next Tuesday. I hope you still here, oh God. I'mma step up to the podium. You acting like a fucking female with that talking. Who you think signed them on? That grill on Guillory today was fucking wack. You know why? Not because you said anything wrong, it's because it... Well, guess what? If it needed to come from a Lafayette man, you might need to talk to them, homeboy. You know what I always tell people when I gotta come to their neighborhoods or to their cities? If you were doing what the fuck you needed to do, I wouldn't have to be here. So where the fuck was you at today? The revolution was today, homeboy. Where was you? So don't, don't step up to the podium next Tuesday when ain't nobody gonna be there. Come on, man. You, you, you coming like, you know, you like you got some, you got something against me? Now you better go play with the motherfucking kids. That's what you better do. You ain't against the cops. You know why you ain't against the cops? Because you should have had your ass there today. Stop making excuses. You ain't against the cops, homeboy. You ain't against them because you gotta sacrifice. You gotta stop what you're doing, man. You ain't, you wasn't, you ain't, you ain't, you ain't, you ain't got the nuts to stand up to them cops, man. You too worried about going to jail. You too worried about when you get in jail, they gonna make you give up your commissary. You too worried about you gonna have to sit in that corner and you can't touch that remote. You, you... You ain't, you ain't, you ain't bought that life, bro. You ain't bought it. Come on, man. Go to jail, you a punk. Tell them real. That's where most of your nowadays white supremacy is born, in jail, because when you in there, you gotta click up with them clowns. Because other than that, you getting your ass whooped every day. Let's tell the truth. Don't make no excuses about not being there today, bro. If, if, if that man's life is that important, motherfucker, I drove all the way down the road. Bitch, you live here. You live here. And you ain't stood up for him yet. So if you was doing what you needed to do, I wouldn't have to be here. So all that, all that old pussy footin' that's going on, let me tell you how the game work right now. Because I need to give you the game, youngster. Need to give you the game. You the typical youngster, don't wanna listen shit. See, what's going on right now? It's a lot of jockeying for position. But it ain't coming for me. I'm an all-star in this motherfucking game. I am five-star. Known all over the country. I don't have to jock for position. But it is a lot of jockeying. It's a lot of snake motherfuckers running around here that's playing both sides of the fence. It's a lot of motherfucker down with them people downtown that's trying to get amongst they people and make them think they really working for them. See, that's the game I gotta teach them, partner. And it don't even take me long to figure out who's who. Because you motherfuckers expose yourself every single time. You expose yourself every single time. And I'mma say it, and you can't even contradict me. You ain't stood up for him yet. What's the problem? What's the problem? You here? What's the problem? And why would you have a problem with anybody standing up for him? Go sit your clown ass down somewhere, homeboy. Now walk up to the podium, be careful what you say, and don't offend the people that you really wanna take pictures with. I have no political affiliations. That's why I don't give a fuck what I say. And I'm not gonna have any. You know what's amazing, bro? I remember they, I was supporting a black superintendent and the, the teachers union president. And a, and a advocate, both of them white, did an open records request on me to see if I had ever taken any money from the school district and why was I supporting this black lady so hard? I got wind of it. And you know what I told them? Run it. Run it. A month later, it came back. Gary Monroe had not taken a dime from the school district. So guess what politicians can't do to me, Cedric? I love to tell it to them, and I tell it to them, y'all just like this here. You cannot infiltrate me with these two things that you normally bring to the table. You can't infiltrate me with pussy. And you can't infiltrate me with money. See, every black man don't sell out. Understand what I'm saying? So if you have anybody that has a problem with me showing up, you need to stop celebrating Martin. Because he definitely got killed in the city he wasn't supposed to be in. Hmm? You don't get to tell me nothing. You, you, you can't tell me anything. You don't control me. You don't scare me. None of that. Higgins comment, C.C. Ruffin was a typical coward racist bullshit. But he don't scare nobody. See, they, they, they say this shit and they show up and... You know, and, and it's supposed to scare the fuck out of us, man. Man, I died on the operating table, bitch. God sent me back here. I ain't scared of shit. It is what it is. See, man, hear it. They don't even understand. They watching you. You know what? Right now, I love the fact that I got all these people here. But the team is watching from Dallas, Oklahoma City, Houston, Minneapolis, LA. Be careful who you pick fights with. It ain't wise. And I just stopped naming cities. Say, man, Clay Higgins, he, he's a, he's a joke. He's a joke. I see Christopher Unity Bernard. That's my brother now. I get on with him on anything right now. So if you got a problem with Five Star being here, talk to Chris. Chris want me here. He wanted a cat that want me here. See, I'mma tell you how this work because I really need to get into this. There is an army. You know, because every now and then you got to stand up. Y'all don't understand the game nowadays. You little hunters and game hunters and, you know, you out there with your rifle and shooting raccoons and, and turtles and all that shit. The streets. I'm like Andre 3000 at the Source Awards. The streets got something to say about this shit, man. And you don't control the streets. See, the, 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 the real cats in the streets, the OGs in the streets, they showing me love because they done figured out this is a real street cat. So I'm gonna go on and say this here so you can get it, partner. Because I'll never run for office in the state of Louisiana. When you will wake up or you still in your mama womb, I ran with the coldest goddamn dope clicking southwest Louisiana history, boy. You don't know nothing about no dope, Mr. Monroe. It's four hundred and forty-eight grams in a pound of weed and it's four fifty-three if I put the plastic bag on it. Make sure you weigh it on a, on, on a beam. Don't put it on a digital because it may uncalibrate and weigh your shit wrong. You ever seen a key? If you lucky enough to see a key, you blessed. I done seen plenty right here in your city. Matter of fact, one of the real Gs that called me, that's how he met me, in a trap house. Say, man, my connection to the streets is ridiculous no matter where I touch down at. See, when you was a kid in, in, in Truman and everywhere else, we ran these streets in Lafayette, Louisiana. But see, we graduated from the foolishness. And we went and did other things with our life. And we made the birds fly south for the winter, boy. See, you don't know nothing about me. You don't know nothing about me, man. You don't know nothing about me, man. And that's why nobody is worried about nothing except getting justice for Trey. That's it. Music bias? Y'all run around here celebrating my homeboy every day. He vicious from the X-Mob. Remember the song "Rollin' Through the Park"? That was cla- classic. Who the hell you think sang in the hook, boy? I was on parlay records with Vish and the Mob, that's my peoples, man. I got love for the streets. We want justice for Trey. And anything outside of that, we ain't having no conversation about it. We ain't getting into no fights about it. We ain't got time to be looting the city trends no more, man. We want justice for Trey. See, all that shit is distractions. I just want justice for this brother, man. And we wanna make sure that this never happens again. Goddamn right, meet me at the Circle Cave. Why you think he, why you think they even wrote Mob or Die? What you gonna do when the tars hit your block? How would Vish said? Got caught up June motherfucking twenty-third. Fucking laws found a bird, puss-ass nigga spread the word. That we were moving dope like Gotti. That's a true story. Watch who you disrespect, boy. So it is what it is. We want justice for Trey, that's our rallying cry. And as long as we can get justice for Trey, that's all we wanna do, man. Vish my, Vish my boy didn't make the funeral, I was, I was actually out of town. I talked to Bun there all the time. Lil Kevin, my godson. Rapping, running out blood, man. So before you start coming at me, these wasn't your streets. These streets you claim, they was ours. Nobody ran us off these blocks. We gave them up. And I needed to give them up so that I could be a father to my kids. So I could be a husband to my wife. That's what it is, man. That's what it is, and that's our biggest problem. Is we need to repair the black family. See, we ain't gotta worry about dealing with militias and all the silly shit. We need to worry about repairing the black family. We need to get our brothers back into the house with the sisters. We need to get the sisters to a point where they can take off the pants, the man can put the pants on, and he can learn how to be a husband, a father, and a provider. That's what our assignment is right now. You want your wife to respect you, you need to get into that house and handle your business. That's the game that I'm on right now. But in the process, we gotta help the brother navigate this old messed up child support system. We gotta help him get a good job, man. If he coming up out of prison, we gotta get him back into the neighborhood. And we gotta get him re-acclimated with everything. We gotta get him his voting rights back. You feel what I'm saying? If we can get him expunged, then we wanna get him expunged. Because my young brothers, the babies, can't make it if the father ain't there to help guide these young brothers, man. And the only way we gonna do that is if we stop these people from killing them. I don't need you on the PS5 no more. I need you to be figuring out how to own the company that made the PS5. I need you to become a young entrepreneur, man. We ain't got time for the foolishness no more, man. We don't need to be working for you people no more, man. We can't leave a legacy for our kids and our grandkids working forty hours a week. We leave them dead. All we leave our kids when we die is a whole bunch of goddamn bills. And you good white folks leave yours trust fund. See, I need to teach you how to save your money. I need you to understand that the rule of seventy-two say that if you take your interest rate from a bank, which ain't one percent, but let's make it one percent. And you divide it into seventy-two, you'll get the number seventy-two. So if you put five hundred dollars in the bank at one percent interest, it would take you seventy-two years for that five hundred to turn into a thousand. I need to teach my people that banks don't do nothing but house your money. You wanna have a conversation with me? See, this is something we could've taught Trey if they didn't take his life. We need to teach our children financial literacy. That's what we need to do. We need to teach these young people, man, that, man, if you can buy you a house at twenty-two, baby, by the time you forty, it paid for. You don't need to be paying no mortgage, know that forty and fifty years old. You don't need to be doing that. You hang around on this page long enough, we gonna get back to what we do. We got the money man Walter Coeter come on every week that's giving you the stock market, stock option game. You don't have to be rich to end up wealthy. You understand what I'm saying? I wanna teach you about IULs, man. Indexed universal life insurance policies, where the rich people hide their money at, man. Where the IRS can't touch it. If you the dope man and you put forty million dollars in a IUL and you get caught up on a, on a Rico case, they can't take your money. This is what we wanted to teach Trey, but you took him from us. You can't talk to me right now for a reason. Because I'm too advanced. I ain't just a little fat dope boy that don't know shit. And I'm on, and you know what, Rose Woodley? I'm only speaking to the ones that wanna get it. Those that don't wanna get it, I'mma follow the rule that Malcolm said. I'mma follow the rule that Malcolm said. Hold on. Rule is simple. When the revolutions start, we gonna have to get rid of some of our own people. Do you understand what, what the man said? Let me tell you something, Elijah. These people don't want peace. They didn't, they, you know, Trump is an idiot, he's always been crazy. But they using Trump as a crutch to be able to, to show the world who they truly are. Donald Trump ain't making none of them be like that. They, they was already that way. You feel what I'm saying? You feel what I'm saying? So races are always gonna show their hands and then they're gonna say that we're racist. Well, the only time that black people become racist to you is when we call out racism. That's it. Black people can't be racist. I'm just be honest with you, man, we ain't been through too much. Do, do you, do, cuz you even, I don't even, I think some of y'all couldn't even walk a day in our shoes. With the shit that we gotta go through? And you expect us to keep a smile on our face? Exactly, uh, Katina Elah. He just brought it out of them. They, they didn't become racist when Trump got in office, they was racist when Obama was there. They was racist when, when Bush was there before him. I'm, I'ma help you out, dog, cuz you, you, you on some dummy shit, man. Let me, let me, let me help you out, man, cuz I, 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 um, Brittany, I, uh, I get a game away for free. Some days I give the game away for free. I get a game away for free. And I'm sorry I'm so late cuz normally I do this early in the day. And, uh, you know. But my thing is, is when it's all said and done, your reputation will be judged by one day. Your character will be judged for a lifetime. There you go, Rosa Flippin', she said, "Black people cannot be racist because we've never been empowered to oppress any group." We can have biases and be prejudiced, but not racist, exactly. You wanna call us race baiters, we dissing that, come on, man. No, nowhere near. Nowhere near. But the revolution shall not be televised. Who's your idol? One of my biggest idols is Chairman Fred Hampton. Didn't even make it to see twenty-four years old, one of the most powerful black men that you'd ever run across. But it took a hundred and twenty-three bullets to kill him. See, you say we need to be peaceful. But even when we come in peace, you murder us. We had people that were protesting peacefully in the sixties and you murdered them. And you want us to forget. What did Mekka do to anybody? What did Malcolm do to anybody? What did King do to anybody? JFK, as screwed up as he may have been, but was helping black people. What did they do? Besides try to help black people peacefully and you murder them? And now you want us to continue the same fucking shit? I'm further along than these youngsters. But even when we peaceful, you murder us. And you know why you murder us? Because you ain't shit. You ain't never been shit. And you come from shit. And you're jealous. You're upset because we shining on your dog. See, black people, they mess up, we let's off a lot of money. But some of us actually do some thing. Now, you ain't on my side. I wanna read your comments, Cedric. So what do you call yourself if I'm on your side to get the results and justice you want? Because what the fuck else you gonna do? Keep crying. You ain't getting through to nobody but the white goober duck hunters. Say, man, on the real way home. If you need to see me, just pull up, man. All that talking behind this computer. I ain't gonna keep doing it with you, bro. I'm not gonna keep doing it with you, man. I don't need you to do a motherfucking thing. A man would've did it already. I'm a man, partner. So if you need to see me, let me know, man. We can drink some cappuccino or something. Pull up, big homie. I mean, I, I ain't gonna do all the talking with you, man. You seem like you got some animosity with me. You don't know me, bro. Let's just, let's, let's just meet, man. Let's drink some coffee together. Let's stop all this wickedness that you doing right now. Cuz all this talking, it ain't gonna get us nowhere, bro. You know what I tell people all the time, man, especially dudes like this here, man? I don't want no problems with you, homie. You might try to hurt me, you might do whatever to me, man, you might, you might really hurt me. I don't want no problems with you. But I know definitely you don't want no problems with me. Like Chance says, gonna be some dreadhead niggas in the lobby. Get your mind right. Say, y'all, good day today, we made progress. Uh, Mayor Josh Gilery, do the things that you say you can do. That's all anybody can ass up you at this point. And we'll apply the pressure where it needs to be applied. And we'll go from there. For those that, that are, I ain't, I ain't gonna block him. Let him have his opinion, fuck him. He ain't got nothing else to do. Motherfucker ain't got no job anyway. Um, and I work for myself, so let me know if you need a job, big homie. Be glad to put your ass out there shoveling shit. Um, let's, let, let's, we, we gonna work what we need to do. I done talked to my people. We know where we at right now. And we know where we are, where we at on what we gotta do. Um, and what I was saying, I, I thank y'all for the love and the kindness that you good people have given me since I've been here. And, uh, it couldn't be any better than what you've done. And I appreciate that. I appreciate that. See, that's the problem. You a whole fucking supervisor. I'm a whole fucking business owner. Own three businesses. I don't work for anybody. Get your fuckin' act, man, now you piss me off. Because I really thought that you might've been a boss. But you ain't nothing but the motherfucking help. Say, man, can you come wash my car? Can you, can you wash my car for me, big homie? You a supervisor? For real? I gotta do it to you. I, can I do it to you, man? If y'all give me one second, I, I gotta do it to him. Give me, give me a second, man. Don't, don't go nowhere, I gotta do it to him. You a supervisor. I'll be right back, y'all. You're supervisor. I'm back. So you you a whole supervisor? Okay. Tell you what. You a whole supervisor, right? Say, a dollar? Let's peel it. But yet better yet, let's just flip it. How much you make? How much you make, dog? How much you make? Ain't no ones in there, boy. How much you make? How much do you make? Shut your broke ass up. Hold on, let me put that down. Let's keep going. How much you make? How much you make, big homie? How much money you playing with? I'm America's worst nightmare. Say, man, supervise these nuts in your broke ass minds. That what you do? Supervise these nuts in your mind, man. Man, my fingers hurting from counting money, boy. My fingers are hurting from counting money, man. Say, man, how much you make? What you make a year? What you make a year, big homie? Hold on, let me show you something, boy. I ain't gonna play with you, man. Hold on, I'm going somewhere real quick. Y'all bear with me. Bear with me. Bear with me. Hold on. See, sometimes you gotta, sometimes you gotta check these youngsters, man. Sometimes, hold on, I'm, 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 I just wanna show you something because you running your mouth. You, you, you wanna come work for me? You wanna come work for me? Hey, come on, man. Come on, dog. Now, because I done showed you that, that mean I gotta go dump all that shit in the bank. In case you try a jack move and I gotta, got to knock your head off your shoulders. Hold on a second, man. Okay, let's go here. It was sent. Hold on. Let's see, let's see what you playing with, homie. Let's see. Hold on. Let's, let's see what you playing with, man. See, cause that why I'm telling you. Oh, I'm good, Joyce. I ain't out my character. I'm good. Hold on a second. I ain't out my character. I'm looking for something real quick. I'm looking for something. So what I'm gonna do, because it's taking too long, I'm gonna pull it up on my phone. Hold on, I'm going to my emails. All right? I'm going to my emails. All right? And I appreciate that, Reginald. Thank you, brother. I mean, Ronald. Hold on. So I made my emails and I'm going to send. All right, hold on a second. Uh, where my, where my stuff at? All right, all right. Now I want you to, I want you to think about this real fast while I'm doing this. Now, how much do you make in a year? Because this is an invoice that I just sent out for one month of work that, that I gotta do. I can't let's go that way. If I can get it to show. That's one month of work. And that's twenty-nine thousand. Well, hold on, man. That, that's a bad time now. Twenty-nine thousand for one month. Hold on, let's try something else. All right, hold on. Okay. Let's, let's try this one. Let, let's try this one. Cause that, that, that's, that's bad. The twenty-nine thousand for one month. People don't have, I didn't ask nobody to send me nothing. They want the cash out, I put it up there. And if they choose to send me money, that's cause they choose to add the kindness of their heart. So hold on a second, man. Let's try this here, Cedric. Since you, you work for somebody, man, you gotta be out your motherfucking mind, man. Let's try this here. Now, I don't want you to get nervous when you see, see, cause that says Monroe Consultation. Political Consultant Agreement. Well, let's see how much was this one. So Sid, here, here you go. Here you go now. I, I don't, I don't want you to get nervous now. Okay. Can you see that? I don't know if you can. Let's try that. I'm trying to angle it. Hold on, Sid, because I, I don't want you to you, you feel me? Did, did you see the number, Sid? Did you, did you see the number, Cedric? Or can you not read with your dumb inbred ass? Did you see the number? Let's say seventy thousand two hundred. That's for a month of work, Sid. Uh, would you like to keep having these conversations? Or would you like to go sit your broke ass down? Now, that's just two clients. I got fourteen. I got fourteen clients. When people with money in the room, shut up, bro. Now, you notice, um, I never even pulled out the credit cards. Let me know when you wanna be a big boy. Let me know when you wanna be a big boy. Cause I got love for you, man. But know one thing. That not only do I make money, I give money back to my community. So if you think I'm gonna come into Lafayette and people put money into their cash app because that's what they choose, you can best believe I'm gonna give money back to this community. And I'm gonna give my heart to this community. See, you here and you ain't did nothing for the community. It's simple. When you decide you don't wanna work forty hours a week for forty years to get forty percent of what you made, you can make all the money you want. How in the hell you gonna get rich making somebody else rich? It can't happen. So I'mma, 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 I'mma leave you alone, Sid. And I'mma, I'mma tell you like this here. Enjoy the show tonight. It'll be your last one. We don't want broke motherfuckers that's confused about their heritage on our show. Justice for Trey, y'all. Remember that. And it is what it is. Once we can get past Trey, I can tell you how to get the money, man. All legal. All you gotta do is just put your mind to it. Ain't no pyramid schemes here. It's what it is. Don't run upon me, homie. Get your mind right. See, you, you a little pussycat. But you fucking with a wolf. And I will eat your ass up. So now do you think I would be in jail a while if they were to put bogus charges on me? I wouldn't be in there alone. And Sid, I said it the other night. My numbers are are just ridiculous. I'd take your bitch too. You came at me like a bitch. I'm gonna handle you like one. I'd take your bitch too. On some biggest small shit. But I got the numbers that'll take your bitch. Be glad to teach y'all Joseph Africa. It is what it is. Love y'all to death, man. School day tomorrow. I gotta go to class and handle my business. Cause I still gotta maintain that three point seven five GPA. We'll talk, we'll talk business. Y'all keep tuning in to the show. If you haven't, go and and, uh, subscribe to the YouTube channel. And I'm gonna get Walter on the Money Man this week. We'll have him on Thursday night for show. And if you wanna learn about money, he gonna teach you money. And he gonna teach you how to make money. Hand over foot. Stop talking like a G and start walking like one. Saying till tomorrow, five star, I holla at you.